Good evening and welcome to the Warren City School District Board of Education meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. Today is Tuesday, August 31st, 2021, and the time is 6:09 PM. We are in Warren G. Harding High School in a cafetorium with live stream available at WarrenCitySchools.org. This meeting is a meeting of the Warren City Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participating during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item Number 11. With that, I'll call the meeting to order, and if everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you could please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Faly. Mr. Faly?
Here.
Sorry. Mrs. Patterson?
Here.
Mrs. Shannon?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Present.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Here. Everyone is present and accounted for. We have no need for Agenda Item Number Three. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Communications. Mr. Shiro, please.
Thank you. I have several communications this evening. First, there's going to be a slight adjustment under Superintendent's Reports. We're also going to give the Board updates on our multiple projects that have been going on. So Mr. Lacy and I will be providing that information, including the work we're doing at Lincoln, the estimate that we also have for the work we're doing at Lincoln, and communication from the church that I'll share with the Board as well related to the work that we're doing at Lincoln. Also part of the Superintendent's Report is an update, which kind of leads into some of those projects such as the one at Lincoln. Ridership on our buses is down, and more families are dropping off their students at school. We've been tracking our attendance. That'll be part of our enrollment update that we'll share with you shortly under the Superintendent's Reports. But ridership for our students that are bus-riding eligible range from anywhere of 43% to 65%. So the projects and the things that we've had to put in place are urgent necessity in order that we can continue to have the operations of the school system going on because really and truly at no time can you anticipate a 50%, 40% jump like that. So that's the position that we are in, and that's where some of this information will be coming. With that, I have no further communications.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Faly?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos? Yes, and the motion carries. Item Number Six, the Treasurer's Report. Mrs. Cortino, please.
Just like to report to you tonight that the ARP, American Rescue Plan SR3 budget in approximately $30 million is in substantially approved status, waiting on ODE's review for final approval.
Wow.
Just to reiterate, we have an elaborate plan to improve learning loss and closes any achievement gaps, and also to improve our facilities in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. So I'm happy to report that that has been finalized, and moving forward, we're already spending dollars on initiatives and things needed.
And that report is available on our website, correct?
Yes, that is.
That we submitted? Okay. Thank you very much.
And other than that, we are begun, the auditors have begun our audit, and this year they're continuing to work remotely to conduct that unless there is an absolute need for them to come on-site. But it worked well for us last year and hoping to have the same results this year.
Okay. That's it?
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you so much. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Shiro.
Well, I think the Board would agree. This is one of the greatest parts of Superintendent's Reports that we get to do, which is providing and awarding a high school diploma to a veteran. This evening, we are going to be awarding a diploma to Vietnam veteran David Eugene Cartwright. So if I could have Board of Education member please read the resolution for the awarding of the diploma?
Yes, I would ask Vice President Patterson if you could please read that in its entirety. And it's under, it was right on the Superintendent's, right below his report there, on page two. Yep, just read it in its entirety.
Sure will.
Thank you.
Awarding high school diploma to Vietnam veteran David Eugene Cartwright. It is recommended the resolution listed below, awarding an Ohio school diploma to David Eugene Cartwright be approved that submitted. Whereas, Ohio Revised Code Section 3313.614 permits any school district to award a high school diploma to any resident of the state who meets the following eligibility requirements. One, veteran left public or non-public high school in Ohio to serve in the armed forces. Two, veteran received an honorable discharge from the US military. And three, veteran was in the US military between the periods of September 16th, 1940 to December 31st, 1946, or June 27th, 1950 to January 31st, 1955, or between August 5th, 1964 to May 7th, 1975. And whereas the local Veteran Service Office has verified that, one, veteran meets the eligibility requirements as stipulated in Ohio Revised Code 3313.614, and two, veteran was on active duty between the period of June 7th, 1968 and December 12th, 1970, and three, veteran has provided proof of the DD-214 or Certificate of Service, and whereas the veteran has made application for awarding of a high school diploma because he did not receive his diploma due to his military service. Now therefore, be it further resolved that the Board President, Treasurer, Superintendent, and High School Principal shall sign a diploma for David Eugene Cartwright. Be it finally resolved that the expenditure to cover the cost of the diploma be made from the general fund. Congratulations to Mr. Cartwright.
Do we have a second?
So, a second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Mr. Faly?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. And Mr. Cartwright, if you would come up. To Mr. Shiro for your diploma. Sir, thank you so much for your service to our country, and we are very proud of you.
Very proud.
Thank you.
Yay.
Okay, Mr. Shiro. And Mr. Cartwright, if there is nothing else, if you want to go, you can go. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. It's entirely up to you. Okay?
But again, personally and professionally, thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you.
This is really a big deal for us. I know it's a big deal for you too, but it's awesome, beautiful.
Absolutely.
I don't know if they're giving you a graduation party now.
Yeah, go for that open house.
That's wonderful, absolutely wonderful.
Yay. That's awesome. Oh yeah, get the family.
And he's number one in his graduating class.
Right?
Yeah.
Now you come up here, like in front of the stage.
Yeah.
And that way-
Make it official.
They want you all in the picture.
Here, I'll move on in the way.
Yeah.
And that way you get a nice photo.
His phone has a lot of bling. Look.
That's her phone.
Oh.
That's wonderful.
We don't want a photo.
Your family, go ahead. That's fine.
Get those masks off. There you go. Yay.
Yay.
Thank you so much.
You're so welcome. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Our smiles are wide under here.
Yes, most definitely. Wonderful.
Have a great evening. Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, Second Superintendent's Report is an enrollment update. I want to share with the Board that the way we've been tracking our enrollment is looking back two years because last year was such an extraordinary year, and where our numbers are as far as our kindergarten or preschool students that may be enrolled in the district but not fully enrolled because of vaccination status or missing papers or something like that. That has really been the difference in our enrollment from what's actually reported today versus what'll be reported another week. We are right on target to be where we were two years ago. Some projections have us between 20, 15 and 20 students above or below. We can say that Student Services just has been catching up now, and we've been a little bit behind because we've been doing appointments versus folks lined up and waiting and congregating in the Board of Education office. There's been over 50 entities for which we've been receiving students. So we have had a large number of students that have been coming in across different grade levels and on different days, locally, out of the area. And so we do hope to have a more comprehensive report, but all indication is that we are going to be where we're at. Now, one of the things we do when we're looking at enrollment is we're not comparing August 31st to August 31st. I'm actually comparing, Dante, Wendy and I are comparing today, August 31st, to like October 20th or 25th. And why we do that is because we have a number of students that are going to be withdrawn in the next week or two, that have moved to schools that haven't opened yet, that haven't sent records requests, because only about half of the school districts are open at this point in our region. So if a child or a family has moved, that information may be forthcoming. We know they're not coming. We know their home is vacant, or have reached out to the family, but it's still not enough to withdraw a student as far as the appropriate procedure. So that is some of the challenges we're dealing with, but we hope for the September Board of Education update to have more information and even more again in October as we, as we're continuing to do that, that body of work. So is there any questions regarding enrollment or the enrollment update?
Does anyone have any questions?
Not a question. I had my usual two phone calls Monday morning, 7:58 and 8:05. Both of them were people who've just moved to the district and wish to know how to enroll. And I always give them my phone number and say, "When you go to High Street and you dial this number, if it doesn't work out, call me back," and nobody's called me back. So, good job.
Thank you. And we've had, we've had some challenges along the way. You know, we've had staffing shortages, and I have to say, you know, we usually bring in substitute employees to help assist with some of the tasks that are not directly tied into the deep heart of enrollment and, and the, in the system. And, you know, that's been a struggle too, finding provisional employees. But I have to say, the, the staff at the high school who does their own enrollment, the staff at the Board of Education, everyone's been pulling through, and everybody's been working to try to do the best we can with our families. We anticipate full preschool and full kindergarten enrollment as well, the numbers that we project and expect. We are seeing some enrollment shifts across different buildings. McGuffey is up as far as enrollment, higher than it's been. Jefferson, a little down. Willard, kind of holding steady, but we have to wait and see. And Lincoln's held pretty steady so far. Lower than it was traditionally years ago, but holding steady.
Have we, when you say we're, we're at where we were two years ago, is that like the other grades about the same? Are we seeing a jump or decline in kindergarten enrollments?
Kindergarten, I always say that we like to expect about 400 kindergarteners. Three years ago, it was a real high jump, went up to 423. And then we've had years that have been about 385. So we can be, and 400s are general guesstimate of where we are for kindergarten. Right now, we are under that, but I didn't have time today to pull our actual fully enrolled versus those that may already be attending but are still waiting some paperwork to get their ID numbers tied to them. So that's part of the deep body of the work that we can do to tighten it up.
Got you. Got you. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, that concludes the enrollment report. Next, Mr. Lacy and I are going to piggyback on projects and updates across the district. So, John, if you want to, if you want to start with that, and, you know, I'll kind of backfill with you.
Okay. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm looking directly at everybody this time. Just wanted to give everybody some updates on our projects that you guys have heard about over the past several meetings. So first off, our Wellness Center, the ad for the Construction Manager at Risk will be in the paper tomorrow. At that point, there will be a 30-day advertising period. And after that, we will have a list of other dates involved as we go through the process of essentially getting more detailed costs and a contractor for the project. Secondly, our facade porch, that project should begin next week.
Okay.
I talked to the contractor today, and again, some of the delays with a lot of these have been material oriented, as I'm sure you guys are aware. And, but they are looking to start next week, he said. Also, based upon last Wednesday afternoon's rain, as a lot of you possibly saw when you came in, the parking lot on Panther Avenue is currently closed. So basically, what happened is there is a, not knowing the detail, there's basically a retention area underneath that parking lot, as well as the two retention ponds that are along Panther Avenue. So the amount of water we got from what I understand was 4.7 inches in about an hour, basically caused all three of those retention areas to back up. And what happened in the parking lot is that it backed up enough that several areas within the parking lot actually heaved upwards and created some damage to the asphalt. There is no sinkholes in the lot itself. Everything is very solid. But where we're at right now is there are some very, pretty substantial cracks and areas that do need filled in. So we have determined for safety purposes to keep that closed. Miller, or, yeah, Dave Grayson from Miller Yount is actually looking at the schematics of design to see, again, if there will be another likelihood for this to reoccur. And hopefully, that will not be the case, but we are looking at it in the meantime, so that lot will remain closed.
If I can make a comment regarding that, the Panther lot, I just want to be very clear. I am not recommending that any significant amount of money is put into that lot until we determine what has been going on with the last two rainfalls.
Yeah.
As you know, Inspiring Minds flooded a couple feet.
Yes.
The pictures were dreadful as far as what, what went through the building. You know, we, we dealt with water up against, a foot of water up against this, this building on the first floor, with some water coming into a few classrooms in the J entrance, which again is right off the parking lot. And that was hitting about 2:30, 2:35 in the afternoon, right near the end of the day. So I'm not looking to invest any amount of significant funds to reopen that parking lot. Now, we might be able to reopen it with some minor fixes, to wait and see if something significant has to be done, but we're not just going to roll through there and pave it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree.
I do too. I agree with that.
You said there was three retentions. Are they all three Rs or just?
Yes.
Yes, we have, we have the, the one underneath the lot, a sand-based system, I believe. And then we have two other smaller retention ponds between there and the, the southern driveway.
We did receive some flooding in four classrooms at the bottom there of the, I think that's the J entrance.
J entrance.
But our guys were on them very quick and did not cause any, you know, any permanent damage there.
Okay.
As well as Mr. Nicholson's office, I believe, had a little bit of damage also. But the next one, just kind of to give you an idea, is the salt bin will begin construction. That was a very long process for that because it's a flood zone we're dealing with as well as salt. So we had a couple of things. We had to deal with the EPA and the city, and the city was very helpful in helping us through the project. That salt bin and the elevation required for it should begin in mid-September. We also have at Jefferson Elementary, K-8, I should say, our concession pavilion that we're putting up for our junior high as well as the Little Raiders.
Yeah.
That should begin construction in mid-September.
Oh, nice.
We're working with the Little Raiders to, their first game is a week from this Sunday. So I talk to them every week, couple times a week, just to help them through the process. Steve Arnold, our coach in the varsity, and Kim Johnson, our junior high coordinator, have been really hands-on with the Little Raiders. And the Little Raiders themselves have really started to, start to follow what we're hoping they would and become more of a feeder program for our, our school. So, so far, so good. We've had a couple hiccups, but they've been really good to work with, and so we're making progress there.
And they have been at the Jefferson property, correct?
Yes, they've been at the Jefferson property since they started
Good.
in July.
Good.
Also, good news, our portable locker room that you see out there by the girls' softball field now has electricity.
All right.
So we will be able to both heat and cool that, that facility. The primary function of it was our freshmen did not have a locker room because of, for safety purposes, closing down the stadium, the locker rooms underneath the stadium on the east side. So now, but they were able to use the locker room during the day. We just couldn't use it for the varsity team at night. So now that should be good to go, and looking forward to that one. Last but not least, in your folders, I gave you a photograph of what has been happening at Lincoln since Thursday, I guess.
Okay.
This, that project should be done, which is, which is a connection point. It's basically from the back corner of the tennis courts, and it serpentines a bit up through, kind of next to where the scoreboard is, out into the circle. It'll give Lincoln another point of exit so that, again, during the day, if any of you folks have been there for drop-off and pickup, as Mr. Shiro said, because of the increase in ridership, they've been a substantial increase in cars. So this should give another point where, I know Mr. Guthrie's already working on some other plans with Mr. Shiro as far as how a new flow will occur, traffic flow. And so we should have that done by, he said, a week to two weeks, depending on the weather. So hopefully, it looks like it's been pretty good. I know they worked over the weekend to do a lot of this, so it's going to be a very, done very well, and I think will make a nice, nice addition to Lincoln.
So a good point to this is, is twofold. Number one, it'll provide our ability to go in up the eastern side of the building, along the back tennis courts, and then intentionally snaking throughout to the lot that has the kindergarten buses. Now, mind you, while traffic's going out, the buses are already parked there, and it doesn't interfere with ingress at that time, nor when the bus is pulled at 8:34, 8:35, will it affect them going out, other than for the minute they need to pull out. So the ingress and the, and the egress at that time will not be affected. During the day, this area could hold upwards of 50 cars. In addition, should we need additional lot space during the day, such as an awards assembly or something of that nature, if, if we chose to open that up for additional parking. Where this has all come into, into view, we've talked prior to the pandemic about adding the additional parking lot at Lincoln, and we hired Philip's mechanic to modify drawings or to revisit drawings that happened immediately after the school was opened about 14 years ago, when the parking was very challenging with the opening. And so there was another lot that was designed with another entrance and exit onto Atlantic Street, closest to our neighbor on, again, that western side of the building. And so if we were to go and just develop into that lot, it would take three months' time. That's a lot of time right now that we don't have, given that, where we are. You might ask, why did we not have this in place prior to the start of school? Well, because on the first week of school, the secretary at the church next to the school made the decision that we weren't allowed to use their lot anymore. And I have the letter here, and I'm just going to read a little bit of it to you. She said, in the, in the second paragraph, she had to wait more than 10 minutes on our first day of school on Monday to drive to her office. That was one of the reasons cited here in the letter. And she added to say, "They had hoped that installation of speed bumps over the summer would discourage our parents from using the lot at all." So basically, without notice, the church doesn't want us there. I say that, our church doesn't want our parents dropping off students at that lot, which has been going on for 14 years, which I also believe is within our rights to do so in the contract and agreement we have with the church.
Yes.
Which was provided as well as an exhibit to the Board, because later on, on today's agenda, there's going to be two related items. One, the agreement with the church that we've paid for parking spaces. And again, if you read the resolution or if you've read the contract, it's broken into three areas. Access to the lot, other than Sundays, parking for 25 staff members, and the abilities for overflow for other events such as shuttling football games. Three specific areas are addressed in that agreement. So to me, that says we are able to do that. Now, we need to make sure that our families are doing it as safely as possible.
That's right.
And that's an area that we have been working on to slow traffic down.
Yeah.
They run a daycare out of the back of there, and, and we've been working very diligently, I'd say most everyone here has, to ensure safe drop-off, not just for our children, but for daycare children as well.
Absolutely.
The other resolution is going to be the building of the road, which is an emergency authorization because we need to get moving on this, because at any point in time, the church is private property. They don't have to follow through with our agreement, even though I have my thoughts on that, that I'm not going to share at this time. The agreement that, with Miller Yount paving, which is the project underway, is a total of all the work that needs to be done for the roadway, and also some other cut-ins. And the total cost estimate, again, it's an estimate at this time, is 132,000. And this is, again, what I'm asking for the Board's support on
Absolutely.
at the school this evening. Now, if we would have known in June that they didn't want us there, and we're going to install speed bumps and kind of subtly do that, well, we would have taken different action. But being that it was the third or fourth day of school, and finding out at 12:30 in the afternoon that they wanted to put a chain up for a 3:30 dismissal, we were able to avert that, and we've been able to successfully keep that relationship going. So those items kind of completes our projects that are going on. Do you have any questions? I want to thank, again, Mr. Guthrie and Mr. Lacy for, you know, working diligently with the church. I mean, they've had a couple discussions, trying to see if there's any way that, you know, they can work with us. And again, you know, I've told a number of parents that, that felt, I'm only doing, one told Wendy and I- I mean, they've had a couple discussions, trying to see if there's any way that, you know, they can work with us. And again, you know, I've told a number of parents that felt, I'm only doing, one told Wendy and I, we stopped them in the parking lot, well, I'm only going 20 miles an hour. And my response was, they don't want you in here at all.
Yeah.
Not 20, not 10, not at all. And that does alleviate a lot of traffic. So again, our plan now is trying to find another means of alleviating that traffic without having to rely on the church.
Good.
Yeah.
And it was always in our plans
It was.
to consider, you know, these projects.
From when the building was first built.
Yeah. And I think the church is happy that we're being, you know, very diligent about it. They see that we're not just trying to say we're going to do different. And again, I'm not the one driving through the parking lot and upsetting parents. I'm not the one upsetting the church, you know? Can't control other people.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your work on that. I know it was a bit shocking, and details had to be worked through, but thank you very much, Mr. Lacy, Mr. Guthrie, and Mr. Shiro.
And that concludes my superintendent's reports for this evening.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to agenda item number eight, which is our Board of Education Committee reports, athletics. Mr. Nicholson, do you have any? Thank you.
If I can add on athletic reports, Athletic Council will be meeting, at our next meeting, I will be sharing our dates regarding the Wellness Center timelines.
Okay.
I met with Kim Phillips last week. Actually, John couldn't meet because he was at the church at the same time, but met with Kim. And we have a timeframe, starting with the Construction Manager at Risk, as John referenced, going out tomorrow, September 1st. And the timeline goes all the way till December 14th, where we would expect that Athletic Council would have everything in place for the board
Okay.
at the December board meeting. So we have outlined a number of dates that Athletic Council's going to have to be responsive to, but essentially, this next month is the process working itself through with Construction Manager at Risk. So again, we still have time. We'll coordinate our calendars, may require a couple extra meetings, like we already did before, with reviewing RFPs, RFQs? RFQs for an architect. So it'll be that similar process, and we'll share it at the next meeting.
Okay. All of these acronyms.
I know.
We thought we had them in education. They have them in construction, too. All right. Financial advisory?
No report.
No report? Okay. Board policies and guidelines? We don't have anything on the agenda this evening? Legislative, I don't have anything. Regina, do you?
Yeah.
Okay. And TCTC, there was nothing from Mr. Faulkner. So we'll move on to, does anyone have anything under old business? Okay, anything under new business? All right, we'll move on to the agenda items. On page four, item one, Mr. Faley, please.
Treasurer's recommendations. Minutes. It has recommended the resolution listed below regarding the August 2021 board minutes be approved as submitted.
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Faley?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson? Yes. Mrs. Shannon? Yes. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page five, item two, Mrs. Shannon, please.
2021-22 co-curricular budget and purpose statements. It is recommended the resolution listed below establishing 2021-2022 co-curricular budget and purpose statements be approved as submitted.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Faley?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page six, item three, Mrs. Patterson, please.
Approve the application, accept the grant, and approve the grant appropriations. It is recommended the resolution listed below to approve the application, accept the grant, and approve the grant appropriation, A and B, be approved as submitted.
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Faley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. For superintendent's recommendations, on page nine, item one, Mr. Walker, please.
Superintendent's recommendations. Agreements, contracts, and/or leases. It is recommended the resolution listed below entering into agreements, contracts, and/or leases, A through E, be approved as submitted.
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Faley?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page 11, item two, Mr. Faley, please.
Dispensing with statutory bidding procedures due to considerations of, due to conditions of urgent necessity. It is recommended the resolution listed below dispensing with statutory bidding procedures due to conditions of urgent necessity be approved as submitted.
Second.
Okay, and this is in reference to what we just discussed? Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Mr. Faley?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page 13, item three, Mrs. Shannon, please.
Agreements, contracts, and/or leases. It is recommended the resolution listed below entering into agreements, contracts, and/or leases, letter A, be approved as submitted.
My second.
Thank you. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Faley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page 14, item four, Mrs. Patterson, please.
Recognition of bids received for supplying milk and dairy products for the school lunch program for the 2021-2022 school year. It is recommended the resolution listed below recognizing the bid received for supplying milk and dairy products for the school lunch program for the 2021-2022 school year be approved as submitted.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Faley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page 15, item five, Mr. Walker, please.
Awarding of bid received for supplying milk and dairy products for the school lunch program for the 2021-2022 school year. It is recommended the resolution listed below awarding the contract for supplying milk and dairy products for the school lunch program for the 2021-2022 school year be approved as submitted.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Faley?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page 16, item six, Mr. Faley, please.
Ohio Schools Council Cooperative Advertising and Receiving Bids for School Bus Chassis and Bodies. It is recommended the resolution listed below for the Ohio Schools Council Cooperative Advertising and Receiving Bids for School Bus Chassis and Bodies for the 2021 and 2022 school year be approved as submitted.
My second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Faley?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page 17, item seven, Mrs. Shannon, please.
Ohio Department of Education Certification for Ohio Teachers Evaluation System and Ohio Principal Evaluation System. It is recommended the resolution listed below regarding the Ohio Department of Education Certification for Credentialed Ohio Teachers Evaluation System and Ohio Principals Evaluation Evaluators be approved as submitted.
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Faley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries, and I think we all have that one memorized. On page 18, item eight, Mrs. Patterson, please.
Acceptance of Gifts. It is recommended the resolution listed below regarding acceptance of gifts be approved as submitted. Our benefactors, number one is an anonymous, and it is at the value of $1,000 for the Warren G. Harding School, High School, Warren G. Harding High School, from the First Presbyterian Church, for the Willard PK through 8 school for miscellaneous school supplies, an estimated value of $2,000, and from the St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton Church, also for the Willard PK through 8 school for miscellaneous school supplies with an estimated value of $1,500. Thank you to all of our benefactors for being so kind towards these schools.
Yes. Do we have a second? Mr. Walker, thank you. And again, thank you to our benefactors. Every meeting we have, we have people that generously support the schools, and we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Faley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page 19, item nine, Mr. Walker, please.
Tuition reimbursement. It is recommended the resolution listed below for tuition reimbursement be approved as submitted.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Faley?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. On page 20, item 10, will be Mr. Faley.
Personnel recommendations. It is recommended the resolution listed below regarding personnel items A through N be approved as submitted.
My second.
Thank you. That will take you to page 34, and we do have a military leave on page 28, Mr. Miles Bissard. And we wish him safety on his training.
And thank you for your service.
Yes, and thank you for your service. And with that, if there are no questions, we'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Faley?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamparos?
Yes, and the motion carries. Okay, we don't have anything under board recommendations. Now, we'll move to agenda item number 11, which is public participation. We have, I believe, one person in the audience, Mrs. Doane. And you can either, if you want, to go to this podium, or there is a microphone down here, whichever one you're more comfortable with. And you'll have three minutes to speak. If you could please state your name and your address first, and then the time will begin.
My name is Ginger Doane, and I live on Oaknall in Warren. I'm a product of Warren City Schools, as is my family and children. I was taught by my teachers to use critical thinking skills, and I implore you to listen to my words and do the same. Mandatory masking for our children should not be occurring. Before I get started on the reasons why, I need to state my disappointment of the handling of this decision by our superintendent and Board of Education. The truth is, mask decision was made in May to fulfill requirements of the ARP in exchange for a $48 million grant of our tax dollars. Parents did not have adequate input, and saying they did on August 10th was intentionally deceptive and designed to exclude the voices of parents who fund both the school system and the American Rescue Plan. Even the letter telling us about mandatory masks was dated four days before the meeting. Masks are not necessary. If COVID is so dangerous to our children and families, then I call the school decision-makers and parents unfit, sending our children into such danger armed with only a piece of cloth on their faces. The fact is, it's not dangerous. Children have a 99.9995 chance of surviving COVID-19. To put this in context, it's 123 times more likely that asteroid Bennu will destroy the Earth in 2300 than a child will die of COVID-19. There have been eight deaths in Ohio since COVID started, and they had severe comorbidities. Children don't spread COVID. Daycare staff survived all last year, and teachers had two paid days off to get vaccinated if they wanted to. Masks don't work. Studies on the CDC's own website clearly demonstrate this. Masks are harmful. Wear masks forever, max, or vax. Masks on our children affect their oxygen and CO2 levels, cause them to breathe pathogens more deeply into their lungs, enable the lab-mitigated virus that has been armed with a furin cleavage site to become more capable of invading human cells when oxygen levels are lower. Masks colonize bacteria and mold, harbor viruses, and they are not even capable of filtering out aerosolized virus. Social, emotional language, and even physical development of the jaw are affected when children are forced to wear masks all day. This is just the tip of the iceberg. I encourage you all to look up Event 201, Great Reset Agenda 2030 on the WEF, UN, WHO's own websites. The WEF said the pandemic represents a rare but narrow window of opportunity to reflect, reimagine, and reset our world. Who funds the CDC Foundation? Who heads the NIH vaccine trials that are provided to the FDA? Do you know two senior leaders on the FDA stepped down just today? Why? When you're done researching, read the Book of Revelations and pray to God for wisdom and discernment. We own the schools, these are our children. As our employees and elected officials, you should be the ones advocating for truth and science.
All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to move into executive session under agenda item number 12, under the provisions of Ohio Revised Code 121.22. The Warren City Board of Education recessed to executive session at 6:54 PM, under A,